I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Ms. Damon.
Please, your heirs.
Here.
Mrs. Brackman.
Here.
Mr. Camersher.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
And Dr. Ward.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I want the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion of Mr. Arrow, second of Mr. Camersher to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement: It is a vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in all things. Not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, you just have to come up to the podium, state your name and your capacity within the district, bring up the issue that you want to talk about or that you want to let us know about. You will be given three minutes, and that will give you a lot of time to say what you want to say. Since it is a non-agenda item, we cannot comment on it, but we certainly do hear you. So anybody here who would like to give the board any information regarding a non-agenda item? Okay, see, normally we go on board to board members, but we're going to go ahead and do recognitions first. So we have some special students here today that are going to be recognized. So, Ms. Kenyon, are you going to do that?
Yeah, so I am just going to actually introduce Mrs. Rebecca Van Blair. Come. Did I say that correct? Oh, good. She is our extended learning program or ELP teacher at Pleasant View Elementary, and I am going to let her take it from here.
So I brought, I invited two groups of outstanding young gentlemen with me this evening. I have Ian Herbst. He is our winner for the stock market. He beat all the other elementary students in the stock market game throughout the whole region. So the region is Illinois and Iowa and Missouri and, I think, Wisconsin. So he, he, he made the most money with his $100,000. I think he ended with, what, like 110?
120?
120,000. He has all of his prizes in there, and you get your banner, and you get your fancy medal. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Can I have one other group?
Ian, stay up, stay up here. We're not done with you yet.
Do you want to, do you want to ask him questions, and then we'll move on?
That'd be great.
Okay, why don't you do the other two and then we'll...
Okay, and then my other group of outstanding young gentlemen are our invention convention finalists. They actually get to go to Michigan and compete with, in the nation, national, international?
National.
National competition with all the other inventors. They created an amazing convention called the Survive a Coat. So have them come up and receive their certificates, and then they move on. In June, they get to present to the, the national judges, and Shark Tank's going to be there and everything. So we're really excited.
Any questions?
That's going on a graduation board.
How about we, how are we, um, any questions for Ian?
I'm just curious what grade is everybody in?
Yeah.
Ian, why don't you, why don't you do this? Why don't you tell us what grade you're in, and if you can introduce your parents, if they're here, that would be great.
I am, I am in fifth grade, and my dad's here with me.
All right, where is he? Okay, and anybody have any questions for him?
Yeah, I want to know what you invested in.
My best stock was MongoDB, which is a computer chip company.
Awesome.
How did you decide what companies to invest in? What resources did you use?
I was just looking stuff up because Mrs. Van taught me to spend all your money, and that's how you're going to win.
Did your dad or mom help you at all? Did they give you any input? No? Are you going to give them input now since you're? Well, I think I would take his input.
Right, I was thinking.
What was the biggest thing that you learned from this, this, this project?
How the stock market works.
And how over, how long of a course were you able to invest your money? Was it over a month or?
Six weeks.
Six weeks?
Six weeks, yeah.
Did you watch it every day, or did you just put it in and say, "I'm just going to see what happens in six weeks"?
Every ELP day I would look, and sometimes at home I would look.
Okay. Is it going to continue to go up, or did it have some ups and downs?
At the beginning, it went down a lot, then it started going up.
Okay. So did you do any market research along the way? No? On, on the, looking at what the investors say about it, or what they're reading their reports on their financial situation and status? Or you just kind of cross your fingers?
Well, if it wasn't doing really good, I would invest in it because I would think it would go up.
Okay.
So did you say, did you put all your money in one stock, or did you have a couple other stocks too that you were working with?
I put it in a couple other stocks.
Diversified a little bit. Well done.
Great. Thank you.
What would you tell a peer? Like, what would you tell any of your friends that are your age range to, to motivate them to participate in this next year?
Well, it's really fun. You try to invest, you try to get the most money and make hard decisions.
Great. Congratulations. All right. So, moving on to Caleb and, is it Ronak?
Ronak, yeah.
Ronak. Can you tell us a little bit about what, what's a project that you did?
So. So what we made is a, what we call the Survive a Coat. It would help hikers or injured people that are lost in the woods survive for an extended period of time before they could be rescued by people, and it also helps people find them if they're lost or hurt, and can't, like, mobilize themselves.
We had all sorts of stuff. We had stuff like, uh, it's called a thermoelectric generator. It would take your heat and turn it into energy, so you could contact somebody by your phone if it's dead, and it can recharge it. We also had a bunch of different gadgets. We had a tent on the back rear end, and then we had a little, what is it, water bladder for you, and then we had all these survival kits in it too, built in.
And a tracker that is constantly broadcasting.
Yep.
Wonderful. How did you guys think about those? Did that happen from experience? Hopefully not.
No. So our inspiration, we knew we wanted to, like, help people survive, but we didn't know what. So initially, we had, like, a backpack survival, a survival kit, but then we decided, but then we thought of, well, how would this fit over a coat? And then the coat inspiration gave us, like, that big, like, push to get going on this invention.
Great. Questions from the board?
Did you have to come up with any type of prototype for this, or?
Yes. A complete prototype.
We made a complete prototype of our coat.
You made it with all the gadgets?
Uh-huh. It took a long time.
You don't have it here by chance, do you?
No.
Still at school. It's, they're preparing for the national competition.
So we probably can't see it until after that, maybe. Probably not, but I'd love to see it.
You can come by and see it.
This is a wedding.
Not that much. Not that much. Maybe less than, less than five pounds. Yeah.
It's a coat you'd wear otherwise. It's not like a special thing to carry with you, and you have a...
Yeah, like when you're hiking. Like, it wouldn't be like a school coat.
You wouldn't have, like, this coat and then another coat while you're out on the trail.
No, you just had, you just have that specific coat because it's made for hiking.
And how does it charge your phone?
Uh, so the thermoelectric generators, uh, turn your body heat into energy by, like, heating it.
So like, do you, do you have your phone, you just put it on the thing, or is there a place that you?
There's a charger. There's a charger that we wired up to a bunch of thermoelectrics.
Oh, okay.
To explain it, it's like, so your heat makes liquids in it flow, and it makes it, it creates energy. Yeah, the electrons move in it, creates energy. And then we all, we had, like, I think, how many? We had five, five of them, and we wired them all together into a iPhone charging.
That's interesting.
How did you guys come up with that idea to make that work?
Uh, so we were just, like, looking at, like, different, uh, like, things that people need to survive, and, like, survival kit materials, and all the big one was like a heating, like, something to get heat. So we also have, like, of course, a firestarter in the survival kit, but we also thought that that would help, like, transmit that heat into electricity, which was, like, another thing for, like, long-term survival.
Yeah, because we were trying to find an energy source that we can make, and then just already in the coat, so you didn't have to go do it in the wilderness.
Was it a requirement to be a team?
No, nope.
So what made you choose to operate as a team?
Uh, we're friends.
That's great.
We go to math together.
Now, I know you guys were in sixth grade. Can you introduce your parents if they're here?
Yep, they're over here.
Any other questions from the board?
Good luck.
Well, good luck. We're going to be rooting for you guys as you guys head to the national, I mean, international competition. Where is that at?
Michigan Dearborn.
Dearborn, Michigan. Okay, and when is that going to be?
Uh, the last day of school, actually.
Yeah.
So in, hey, that'd be a nice way to send off the, the sixth grade year.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, congratulations again to all of you, all three of you. You guys have done a great job. You continue to make us proud of our school district for the endeavors that you guys have achieved.
If you have, just, again, just say congratulations. All three of you have developed skills that could definitely help you in the future, whether it's investing, or potentially becoming rich multimillionaires because of a great idea you come up with. Well done. All of you guys can be very successful. We're very proud of you, and don't ever stop being creative, or thinking, or taking risks. It's the best thing you can do in life, so well done.
Remember all of us sitting at the table. Remember us.
That'll be encouragement.
Congratulations.
Thank you for having us.
Enjoy the concert tonight, too. We look forward to seeing you there. You guys play.
So, yes, now is a good time to, if you guys want to leave, we're going to carry on the rest. All right, moving on to board members. Uh, Mr. Camersher, anything?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Mrs. Wheeler?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all of the elementary school music teachers, the custodial staff, the administrative staff, the PTAs for all of the spring concerts that we just had. Riverdale Heights had theirs last week. It was fantastic. It was a great opportunity to come in and see the kids perform, and I know that it's a lot of hard work for the staff, so just wanted to thank everyone for that.
His heirs.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Kunkel.
Nothing for me.
Okay. I just wanted to give another shout-out to, we had the Spartan Drama staff and the group, the troupe here last board meeting, and there was a Spartan Spotlight this last weekend. I unfortunately could not make it, but, because I was on call, but I heard so many good things about it, so I just wanted to congratulate them, and all of the participants in the Spartan Spotlight for what a, another year, a very successful year of performing Cinderella. Right, Ms. Damon? And she was there as well.
You have to have it on your calendar for next year because, like, a friend of mine who I first met when I joined the board, she said, "I've never been known with so much joy." And so much talent. Incredible. Absolutely incredible.
I remember when I went last year, I, I think my, my, my face was hurt because I was just smiling so much the entire, the entire several hours. So it's, it's a really great event. So again, thank them all. Let's hope that they continue it for next year because it is just a wonderful experience for everybody involved. All right, Mr. Kingley Smith?
I have nothing.
We have a lot more with you later.
Right. Just going to echo the sentiments with regard to the Spartan Spotlighters' nominal performance, and just a growing opportunity for all people that were a part of it. Thanks to them, and to Miss Maya for, for leading that, and for the instilling of leadership in the kids, to the, you know, the student directors and the lights, all of, all of it. Great learning for, for our kiddos. Also, want to thank our staff to, for their continued diligence, and, and our parents for their continued diligence to bedtimes during ISAS season. It is the Iowa Statewide Assessment of Student Progress, formerly known as ITBS or Iowa Assessments. And so, we're amidst that season right now, and our staff is working really hard, including, like, our tech team and others behind the scenes to make sure that no rock is left unturned, and that we have positioned our kids to do their very best on those assessments, and do so with fidelity and security. So that's been really great. And then the last thing was going to be, I mentioned our road crew, but just the, the village it takes to make sure that six, actually twelve, programs go well in the AM and PM, and when you see packed gyms, it is just so awesome to be a part of a community that embraces and supports our students in those kind of ways. So, really cool.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wright. Uh, Ms. Kenyon, anything?
I would just add, I was there Friday night. Cinderella was awesome. And could there be cheaper snacks anywhere in the world?
I know.
I was so excited. I was like, are you sure? You want, like, a tip for that? That's only a dollar? So, yeah, no. In all seriousness, I think one of our students was asking if this could go longer next year. Like, could we do this longer? So it's just knowing some of those students and seeing them on stage is just delightful, so.
Thank you. Ms. Westgren, anything?
I do have four recognitions this morning. The first is the Junior Achievement Titan Competition. So we had a group of students from the high school participate in the competition. It's a simulation-based program in which high school students compete as business CEOs in the phone industry, experiencing firsthand how an organization evaluates alternatives, makes decisions, analyzes the outcomes of those decisions, and then strategizes what to do next. With a focus on financial literacy and insights into the workplace, the competition brings business economics to life. So our students worked in a team to make financial decisions about production, marketing, and research and development, as well as corporate social responsibility. Under the supervision of high school business teacher Janine Murphy, Pleasant Valley students took first place, and in Ms. Murphy's words, "We blew the competition out of the water." We ended up beating the second-place team by more than $20 million.
Wow. That's great.
Way to go. Congrats to those students.
Yes.
My second recognition is a scholarship. Um, we were notified that two of the three winners of the brand Bozar Scholarship given at the Figgy Museum are Pleasant Valley students. Those students are Gabriella Howell and Claire Onions, and they have been awarded $12,000 over the course of four years to attend a college of their choice with a major in the arts education field. Lots to be proud of there.
Excellent.
Our Choir State Solo and On-Samba Festival. Um, we had several students participate. On April 13th, um, of our students who participated, we were awarded 54 Division One Superior ratings and 37 Division Two Excellent ratings, and four Division Three Good ratings. Special congratulations to our singers who received Best of Center awards, Connor Shute, soloist, Carly Berta, Sydney Smith, Connor Shute, and Reese Bailey, part of the mixed quartet. And last but not least, just to update the board on our Ethics Bowl National Competition. So as you might recall, um, we did recognize the students at the board meeting not too long ago. They did compete at the national competition on April 12th at Chapel Hill. Our students broke into the top 20 teams, but they did not make the quarterfinal round. But in addition, our advisor, Dr. Lynn Lundberg, um, she is an English teacher at the high school and the Ethics Bowl team... Um, but in addition, our advisor, Dr. Lynn Lundberg, um, she is an English teacher at the high school and the Ethics Bowl Team Advisor. She came away um with the Coach of the Year for the National High School Ethics Bowl two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four season. And Dr. Lundberg let me know that um the students have already asked for some practice sessions this spring to get a head start on next year's season and they plan to start this week already. They're very dedicated. That's it?
Great, wonderful. Ms. Damon, anything?
I forgot to send you the approved lead. I'll do it right now.
Okay. Right, uh, Ms. Struce?
You know, I was gonna share, you know, we saw the students here this evening with us and we're talking about JA Titan, Titan Competition. You know, I mentioned last time with our junior achievement, we're in the process right now of doing the interviews for Biz Town. And again, many of us are involved in that process. It is just fun to go and interview fourth grade students who are planning for a career, a job and listening to them. And this year, they've done a remarkable job of asking us questions really for the first time when we get done interviewing them, they're doing a great job. So it's been fun and they'll be ready for Biz Town here shortly, so see if they get their jobs. But again, thanks to JA for all they do to help our kids with the financial experience in the future.
Great, wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, um, why don't we move on to, um, just a minute? But why don't we uh, approval of bills before we do the consent agenda? That way, people can take a look at personnel. Yes, no, no, it's, it's not roll call, it's going to be.
Yeah, recording it.
Yeah, so I can give you some more of this.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, all right, so why don't we, before we do the consent agenda, because we'll wait for the personnel um agenda to come through, why don't we start working on the approval of bills? So I will take general funds.
I move general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Okay. Motion by uh Ms. Conkell, second by Mr. Ayers, that the general fund warrants be issued, the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, nutrition fund?
Nutrition Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Ayers and by Ms. Wheeler, that the Nutrition Fund Warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund?
I move that elementary junior high activity, I move that elem- elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of four thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by uh, by Ms. Wheeler, that the Elementary Junior High Activity Fund Warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High School Activity Fund?
I move that the High School Activity Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of forty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the High School Activity Fund Warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management Fund?
I move that the Management Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of fifty-five dollars in invoice is presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wheeler, second by um, Ms. Conkell, that the Management Fund Warrants be issued, the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital Projects Fund?
I move that Capital Project Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of one million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Cammerer, that the Capital Projects Fund Warrants be issued, the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pepper or physical plant and equipment?
I let the Pepper Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkell, second by Mr. Ayers, that the Pepper Fund Warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal Service Fund?
I move that Internal Service Fund Warrants sixty-five eighty-six to sixty-five eighty-eight and ACH thirty-one ninety-four through thirty-one ninety-five be issued in the total amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and sixty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Mr. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that the Internal Service Fund Warrants sixty-five eighty-six to sixty-five eighty-eight and ACH thirty-one ninety-four through thirty-one ninety-five be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Trust Fund?
I move that Trust Fund Warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eleven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Conkell, that the Trust Fund Warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Did everybody get a chance to look at the personnel approval? Cause if they did, um, then we'll go ahead and I'll take a motion on the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Conkell, that to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to old business, uh, so the first thing we have is a twenty-twenty-four consent about adoption of budget and taxes. Uh, Mr. Kingley Smith and Mr. Struce?
All right, um, well, tonight is the last step in the process of certifying our budget for the upcoming two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Um, we've been talking about this for several board meetings this spring. You may recall at our last board meeting on April eighth, we had a public hearing in which members from the public could either orally or um in writing um give us any concerns or questions that they had regarding the proposed um tax levy rate for next year and the, the taxes that are being levied for next year. We did not have anybody show up to um during that public hearing, so uh tonight we will also need a public hearing um prior to our motion to adopting the budget and taxes for next year. You have in your board um su- supporting documentation, the document that we normally present every year at the meeting where we adopt the budget, um, just, and I have it on the screen here. Try to make this a little larger, be up, um, hopefully you got a chance to look at it before the meeting. Oops, I'm gonna make it a little smaller, there we go. Um, the main thing to point out is this, the, the number on, for the grand total in the column on the right on this page, under Budget Year Proposed Property Tax Dollar Levy for Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-five, shows that the, the maximum amount that we can levy for property taxes for next fiscal year is that twenty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. The state will sometimes make adjustments to things even after we certify the budget for um late legisla- legislative items and things like that. Um, and if so, it's possible that that number could go a little lower, but it will not go any higher than that twenty-eight million, eight twenty-two, six hundred. And then uh the other main thing to point out, as we've talked about, is we are proposing keeping our overall district levy rate the same for this, next year as it was for this year at the thirteen point four six oh five five. So no change in the overall property tax levy rate for the district being certified for next year. The rest of the documentation in here is, like I say, just, I'm not really gonna go through it. Hopefully you had a, a chance to look at it pri- prior to the meeting. If anybody has any questions, I'll take any questions on it. Um, these pages here show the breakdown, fund by fund, all of our various funds in the school district, um, what our resources or our revenue is for each fund, what our projected expenditures or requirements are for each fund. Um, the, uh, this page here is a page that shows all of our outstanding debt in the district, including the one that we are going to be officially approving later on in the board meeting tonight. And then the last few pages on here, um, there are several pages on here that just show a history of how we use the cash reserve levy in the district, which is one portion of our overall general fund levy. So again, I would take any questions if there's any questions on this packet. Otherwise, we just need to have our public hearing and then we just need to have somebody make the motion to approve the certified budget and tax levies for next year.
All right, does anybody at the board have any questions regarding the adoption of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, four budgets and taxes? Will you for Mike? Okay, I'm gonna open this up to the public. Does anybody have any questions regarding the twenty-twenty-three, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, four budget taxes?
No.
I'm seeing none, I'm closing this um, public hearing, and now I will take a motion.
At this meeting of the Board of Directors of the Pleasant Valley Community School District held as provided by law, finding that the notice of the time and place of hearing has, according to law and as directed by the board, been published on the eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-four in the Quad City Times and that the affidavit of publication thereof was on file. And after hearing any resident or taxpayer presenting objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget, I move that the board adopt the attached budget summary together with property tax levies totaling twenty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars and a levy rate of thirteen dollars point four six zero five five per one thousand dollars of taxable valuation for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year.
Okay, and just again, um, on our, on aside number three, it says adoption of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, four budget, it should be twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. So just make a correction in your board packet?
Do you have to get that updated?
I mean, the, the motion is correct, it's just the, the title is, it's not. So again, what I meant to say was, any questions on the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget and taxes? Is what I wanted to get the question on. Okay, so, who was the second on that?
That was me.
Okay.
By a nose.
Uh, motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers, that at this meeting, the Board of Directors of the Pleasant Valley Community School District held as provided by law and finding that the notice of the time and place of hearing has, according to law and as directed by the board, been published on the eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-four in the Quad City Times and that the affidavit of publication thereof was on file. And after hearing any resident or taxpayer presenting objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget, I move that the board adopt the attached budget summary altogether with property tax levies totaling twenty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars and a levy rate of thirteen dollars point four six zero five five cents per one hundred, per one thousand dollars of taxable valuation for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon?
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. McCamper?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. Okay, moving on to uh other old business items. We have resolution appointing paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent approving the payment agent, the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the same. Mr. Kingley Smith?
All right, um, the next four agenda items are actually all related to the borrowing of money for the building addition and renovation on the Pleasant Valley High School. Um, but we had to list them on here per the attorneys as four separate agenda items. Um, in the board packet again, um, there was um a lengthy thirty-two-page um thing in the board packet which has the resolution. Basically, it has everything related to the next four agenda items. Um, the first thing is that we would be approving tonight is this resolution appointing the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent and approving the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and au- authorizing the execution of the same. The company that um we would be using that would be all of those things, the paying agent, the bond registrar and the transfer agent is a company um that is called UMB Bank NA um out of West Des Moines, Iowa. They, they are the company that would actually be handling all of those responsibilities. Um, so again, the, the, the reason for this resolution would be appointing them to be, serve in those capacities. The, um, so I don't know if we wanna go ahead and just make the motion for that particular resolution. Makes sense since they have these listed as four different items on the agenda?
Why don't we do that first?
Take any questions if there's any questions, but um, UMB Bank is also the company that we used for our Pepple borrowing, our most recent Pepple borrowing um for these same procedures. So they used them before and they do a good job of performing these procedures, so.
Any questions for Mike regarding that? Now I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the resolution appointing UMB Bank NA of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, bond registrar and cha- transfer agent and also approve the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorize the execution of the same as presented.
Motion by Ms. Wheeler, second by Mr. Cammerer, that the board approve the resolution appointing UMB Bank NA of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent and also approve the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorize the execution of the same as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon?
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Camper?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. All right, so moving on uh to the next item, it's gonna be approval of the taxes.
All right, um, and just on that previous item, I should have mentioned, you did also have a copy of the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent agreement in your board documentation also. Uh, the next item then is the tax exempt exemption certificate. Of course, one of the big um things for investors in these bonds is that they are tax exempt from um state income taxes. Um, and so that makes them very desirable for some investors for them to be tax exempt. So um this document, which was also in your board documentation, the first couple pages here were just um wording from our um Bond Counsel, Aylers and Cooney Law Firm that just talks about the various rules that we have to make sure we follow in order for these bonds to continue to stay tax exempt throughout the life of the bonds. Um, some of those items include um requirements regarding how soon we have to spend the ex- spend the bond proceeds um over the next couple of years and those kind of things. So again, this is a pretty lengthy document, twenty-two pages in length here, um, that was in your board packet. But again, this is the standard tax exemption certificate um that our Bond Counsel requires um us to approve, so. If anybody has any questions on that, I'll take any questions, otherwise we just need a motion on this also.
Any questions for Mike? Now I'll take a motion.
I move that the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Camper, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon?
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. McCamper?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
And now approval of continuing disclosure certificate. Mr. Kingley Smith?
All right, you also had a copy of this in your board documentation and I have the first page of it um up on the screen right now. Um, it's an eight-page document. The reason for this is it's a requirement of a bond um issuance, sales tax revenue bond issuance like this um because it's a publicly traded security that each year annually we have to um do what's called continuing disclosure of financial information, um updating investors on things if there would be a material event, such as, for example, if we were to miss a bond payment or something like that. There's a, there's a um fairly lengthy list in here of what's considered a material in, uh, event. And if any of those things were to happen, you have to let investors know about that. Also, we have to um submit our annual audit report to um a site called Emma, which is where you put this information related to the continuing disclosure re- requirements. So um this resol- for this approval is just approving this certificate. One of the things that Dr. Wugley will be. One of the things that Dr. Wugley will be signing after the meeting related to the issuance of these sales tax revenue bonds. So I'll take any questions if anybody has any questions on this one.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? All right, if not, I will take a motion on the approval of continuing disclosure certificate.
I move that the form of continuing disclosure certificate be placed on file and approved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Mr. Ayers, the form of continuing disclosure certificate be placed on file and approved as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. McCannwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
And now resolution for the issuance and providing for and securing the payment of the bonds. Mr. Clingensmith?
All right, so this would be the final step where we would officially approve the issuance of the sales tax revenue bonds, the $27,180,000 of sales tax revenue bonds, series 2024, that are being issued to help finance, again, the addition and renovation onto Pleasant Valley High School. So that resolution is in this first attachment that was in the board documentation. So there's numerous pages in this packet related to that, but we summarize it all and give you a motion that needs to be made that isn't nearly as long as what is all the wording in the board packet, so. This would again be officially adopting, approving the issuance of these sales tax revenue bonds.
There's no turning back.
Right.
Yep. So, anybody have any questions for Mr. Clingensmith? Now I will take a motion.
I move that the board approve the resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $27,180,000 school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, series 2024 of the Pleasant Valley Community School District, State of Iowa, under provisions of Chapter 423 F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCannwisher, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the board approve the resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $27,180,000 school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, series 2024 of the Pleasant Valley Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapter 423 F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds as presented.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. McCannwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
So moving on to new business, we're going to give Mr. Clingensmith a break for just a minute, and we're going to move on to Future Teachers Academy of St. Ambrose University. Mr. Struce and Ms. Presscreep.
So before we begin, I just want to say thank you to Mike on all the work that he has put in to make all this possible here the last few weeks, and his motions were just motions tonight, but a lot of behind-the-scenes conversations, phone calls, and a lot of work he's had to do, so, well done.
Thank you, and thanks to Matt Gillespie again from Piper Sandler and our bond counsel with Aylers and Cooney. We pay them for it, but they do, they do a very good job of, well, when Matt was here to present things at last board meeting.
Yes.
There's no way we could do it without their expertise also, so. Give it to them too.
And I think that then, one of the important things that I think that he mentioned was the fact that with this bond issuance, the taxpayers are not on the hook for the $27 million. It's because we have it against future.
Right, future, future sales tax revenues.
Correct, yes. That's, that's an important point. Okay, thank you.
So, the Future Teachers Academy, just kind of give you a little background. You know, each November, we always come to you with new courses that we are going to offer, and then usually approved by December, and then they go in our handbook. This last week, we literally had St. Ambrose reached out to us regarding their educational programming opportunity. They've been working with Bettendorf, Davenport, and Moline School District this year to try to put some new plays to look at to address the teacher shortage that we are potentially experiencing down the road. So with those districts working with St. Ambrose, they came up with a plan, it's called the Future Teachers Academy. St. Ambrose, now that they have the works in place, looking and making it possible, have reached out now to North Scott and us to see if we want to partner with them in this process. Really what it's designed to do is to take students who are now leaving their junior year, so looking to be a senior this coming year, and they're offering them an opportunity this summer to take three course, I should say, it's two courses this summer in education, and the two courses, one would be the Introduction to Teaching Profession, a two-credit course, Educational Technology, which is a two-credit course, and Child and Adolescent Psychology, a three-credit course. Those three courses are the introductory courses that you would take if you wanted to go to St. Ambrose and enroll in their education program. Once you take those three and you do 40 observational hours, you are then enrolled in their education program. Their design of this program when they reached out to us was you teach two of those classes this summer over a two-week span from June 17th through the 28th. Students would go to class from 8:30 in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon, so a full day for two courses, for two weeks. And then in the fall, they would do an online course, Education Technology, and do their 40 hours of, or observation. That equates to seven college credits that they'd be receiving, totally free to the students, no charge. It would cost us $350 for each student who enrolls. And I might say, why are we paying? It's very comparable to kind of like our concurrent enrollment, where kids go to Scott and we pay the course for them there. It just happens to be through St. Ambrose, it's not concurrent enrollment, but the price is similar to that. Bernie did some work and some investigation with the high school. We currently have 11 students who are looking at potentially being teachers. Of those 11, six are seniors now, and five.
You got it right, good man.
Thank you. And five are going to be seniors coming up, so there are five kids who could potentially take advantage of these courses this summer if it works in their schedule, if they're interested in doing it. But we could also reach out to all juniors now who are done being at the end of this year and say, hey, here's an opportunity, if you're pursuing this, we just know the students through research, the ones who have signed up for classes at E I C C or in our building, that's how we know there's 11. There could be more who might be interested in taking advantage of this. So really, tonight is just to say, hey, this is a unique opportunity. Would you, as a board, be willing to say, yes, let's pursue this partnership, see how it goes this summer? We may have zero students enrolled, but at least we're offering the opportunity to see if someone is interested in doing it. If they do take these three courses, very important to me is we reached out to E I C C, and they're our partners, they have been our partners, we want to make sure we're not doing anything against what they would not support, and they are in favor of it. In fact, students could take these three courses, and because the transfer major now that they have between E I C C and Ambrose, they could still enroll at E I C C, take their Gen Eds there for two years, and then transition to Ambrose. Ambrose and E I C also have a situation where if you enroll at E I C C, you can take up to six credits at St. Ambrose while you're enrolled here at E I C C pricing. So again, you could take these seven credits for $350, enroll at E I C C, take six more credits at their price versus St. Ambrose pricing. I mean, there's some real cost-saving opportunities in still allowing students to pursue the educational track and educational program. So for the most part, I see it as a pretty win-win situation. It's just seeing if kids would want to take care of the opportunity, and for us, potentially finding kids who might want to be teachers in the future. Now Bernie, is there anything you would add to that at all, or thoughts?
You summed it up well. I do have to leave for the band concert, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, though.
Um, what, so how, the, the courses, or this course for the summer would be over at St. Ambrose?
Correct.
So then they would just provide their own transportation, or?
Correct, yep. So from 7:30 to 3:30. I don't know if they're going to do like one class for a full week, another class for a full week, or they do half and half, but it's two classes that they take this summer.
Yeah.
Quite rigorous.
Yeah, so it's basically a semester class in two weeks.
Correct. Two classes.
Two classes.
Yes.
That, that's a lot of work.
It'd be very intense, yeah.
Are there any grade requirements for the high school student? As like a prereq to be able to do it?
No, they did not say that. The biggest thing that we would want to monitor would be, again, because they're high school students taking college credits, if they were not to take or pass the class, drop out of the class from a fall eligibility from athletics or activities, we'd make sure we'd track that as well, make sure kids are aware of that, so if they don't take a class, fail it, and then they're stuck, you know, the part that's paid. And fall sports too, so we'd work with them on that.
If they started it and then they wanted to drop it, do we get our money back? How does that work?
And not in such a short period of time. At E I C C, I don't remember what the window of time is, it's.
Usually within the first two weeks, you can get some sort of reimbursement.
But if they drop off, then does that then follow the family to pay that? Or do we just, are we just out that?
We.
You would be out that.
Yep.
You're just reading my mind, you can't like have them pay and.
Hopefully in a two-week span of time, they can make it through.
Are the credits qualified at other places in Hawaii, is that?
Yes.
To the University of Iowa?
So could go to any of the region schools, because they have that transfer eligibility.
And not just for elective credits, but program credits as well.
Yes.
Other questions? Sounds reasonable to everybody, then I'll take a motion.
I move the board approve the partnership with St. Ambrose University to allow incoming high school seniors to enroll in the Future Teachers Academy.
Motion by Ms. Wheeler, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the partnership with St. Ambrose University to allow incoming high school seniors to enroll in the Future Teachers Academy. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. McCannwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
Now moving back to Mr. Clingensmith again, we're going to do the March 2024 monthly financial report.
All right, so also in your supporting documentation, you had a copy of the March 30th, March 2024 monthly financial reports. Again, this month, I did not notice anything that stood out to me as unusual. Everything continues to project or go pretty much where we projected so far through the year. The only thing I would just remind the board of is second installment of property taxes that people pay each year. We received the majority of those property taxes in the months of March, April, and May, so you, if you were tracking this from month to month, you would see fairly significant jumps in the property tax revenue for the funds that receive property taxes, which would be the general fund, management fund, and P E P L are the funds that receive property taxes, so just if you were tracking from month to month, you would see fairly significant jumps in property tax revenue during those months, because that's when most people I think they do first, I believe. It's in an escrow account, so it just automatically goes to my account. Anyway, so that's the only thing I was going to remind the board of. If anybody has any questions, I'd take any questions, otherwise just need a motion for that.
What was the falloff, the cause for the falloff in grant amounts between years?
I would need to research that a little more.
It's about a million bucks, right?
Yeah. I was guessing, were we still spending some escrow money? I don't think we were supposed to get any escrow money a year ago, were we?
We were not receiving it, we may have had some yet, but we were not receiving it.
I'd have to research that a little more.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you after the board meeting, or all the board members at the board meeting with them? No.
Other questions for Mike? Now I will take a motion.
I move, I move the board accept the monthly financial report for March 2024 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the board accept the monthly financial report for March 2024 as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. McCannwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.
So, future dates, on May 13th, we have a regular board meeting at 6:00 PM, and then on May 20th, which is a Tuesday, it's a month, it's a Tuesday after Memorial Day is when we have our next board meeting after that one, so that one will be on a Tuesday, starting at 6:00 PM. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I did have a question.
Oh, hold on.
Sorry. So I SaaS testing, is that all online or is that paper?
Online.
So we only have one internet connection to the district, right?
Say again?
We only have one internet provider connection to the district, right?
Correct.
So what happens if it goes out during I SaaS testing?
There is a window of, when, Tony, when's the last date that we have to have testing done by? Is it end of April-ish?
Our, our window, we are going sooner than the window is over, I believe it is.
You just.
I need to look it up, but our, our window concludes on 26th. We are planning to have to extend that a couple of days, and we're still within the state window easily.
Okay, thanks.
And just a real quick plug, remember, next Monday, the 29th, is our Pleasant Valley Education Foundation golf outing. I think we still have five foursomes that we still have room for, if anyone wants to get a team of four put together, we'd welcome those to golfing next Monday at 9:30 tee, tee time, and it's shotgun start.
Anything else for the good of the, good of the order? Not?